I'm going to go ahead and call the June 12th study session of the Costa Mesa Sanitarium District Board of Directors to order, and Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Assistant Secretary Robert Ooten.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
President.
Vice President James Fairman.
President.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll move to public comments. Time for persons in the audience to make comments on within our jurisdiction not listed on the agenda. Mr. Mosher, you've indicated a request to speak at this time?
Yes, thank you, President Schaefer, and members of the board. My name, as you know, is Jim Mosher, and I had several non-adjunct comments I wanted to make today.
That's you, Jim.
First comment I wanted to make is that on the district's website, which is generally excellent, it has a transparency button, and at the bottom of the transparency page, it has what it calls a website transparency checklist, which I think is a very good thing. I looked at that yesterday, and I noticed of the items that are checked off, one of them is only half-checked off, which is the district's commitment to have an ability for people to make sewer applications online and track the process. And since I missed about half your meetings, I don't know if you discussed that or why it's only half-checked. If you have not, I would think you might want to look into that. And second, one of the things that is checked off, actually should no longer be checked off, which is the director contact information, because inadvertently or not, the little email addresses for the directors no longer work. And in connection with that, I wanted to suggest, since you now have a Citizens Advisory Committee, you now have 11 people in the district who are interested in district affairs, you might consider giving them the assignment of reviewing the district website and commenting on that to you and to the staff, because I think there's probably a number of things in it that could use updating or improvement. Speaking of the Citizens Advisory Committee, I've tried attending to their meetings. I found them rather confusing, because I did not know who the members were, who the officers were, and in that connection, and even in connection with your meeting today, on your agendas, it would be good if you listed who the members are of the meeting that is body, the body that is meeting, and who the officers of that meeting are, so if someone wants to address them, they know who they're supposed to be addressing. And also, having attended to those meetings, I was going to suggest to the board members, if they want to attend the Citizens Advisory Committee meetings as observers, it would really be better for them to sit in the audience. It creates great confusion when we have one group that looks like they're meeting up here and another group that's meeting over here. Sorry, my notes are not very organized here. The Citizens Advisory Committee is meeting currently about election matters, which are important to the district. I wanted to point out, in connection with them and with the city web, with the district website, if the board really is committed to open competitive board races, it would be good for the website to have the clear directions for people who want to run for the board, to know how to go about that, what the timeline is for putting their applications in. That's one of the things that is not currently updated on it. And I would think as late as June, the timeline for nominations and so forth must by now be well-known and should be widely broadcast on the district website, whether we're having district elections or not. And in connection with that, I wanted to plant in your idea, in your minds, an idea alternative to districting. At the last meeting, I brought up the idea of cumulative voting, which your district council said the registrar would not allow, which in a race like this November, where there is three open seats, say there were five candidates, each person would be given three votes that they could distribute however they wanted, to all in one candidate, if they wanted to vote for the minority candidate or not. That apparently is not viable, but there seems to be an idea which would, actually could be implemented by November, that would solve the racially polarized voting problem without having to draw a city, county, without having to draw districts. You could still have the same ballot, same three seats, same five or 10, or however many candidates are running. The solution is something called limited voting, which was not mentioned in any of the things that the district had. And limited voting, you get each voter one vote. And the three top getter, three top vote-getters get the three seats that are open. In that way, if there was, say, a Latino candidate, and all the Latino people in the, Costa Mesa Sanitary District wanted to vote for that one person as their preferred candidate, they would win, even if they were not confined to a district. So that would work, even if they were homogenized throughout the district, they would get a voice in the director leadership. It, when you first hear it, it sounds a little bit crazy, you don't have one vote, instead of the three you're accustomed to, but it would solve the problem. It would not be a problem for the registrar. Instead of saying, "Vote for three," it would just say, "Vote for one." And to me, it could be implemented by November, and no fuss, no muss. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to items of study. Ed, you're up, code enforcement report. As Ed's making his way, just for the benefit of the board, we're going to move item seven on the agenda up, call it item 4A. We're going to go after number four. We're going to do that. A lot of work, but we'll, I don't want to give. Thank you, Ed.
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. Ed Roberts, your district code enforcement officer, providing a consolidated reporting of the code enforcement activity for months of April 2018 and May of 2018. For the benefit of the board, I put a packet together and a report summarizing my activity. April 2018, there were a series of five scavenging investigations that were fully documented. There were numerous contacts on top of that, but these were the ones that were addressable due to violations being observed and able to be documented. The majority of them were spread out sporadically throughout the community, no real concentration that I can denote. For April 2018, there were a series of 109 notices issued to various residences in the community, no items of note beyond that, no graffiti cases of note, and for the benefit of the board, to the rear of the packet, April, there's a map showing the code enforcement activity. Moving on, for May 2018, I conducted a series of eight scavenging investigations. Summaries of each contact are provided for the benefit of the board members. Trash container enforcement did about 99 contacts throughout the community. These are pretty much all over the place, West Side and East Side, Mesa Verde, Mason North, the various communities. And Scott, the general manager, asked me to provide a reporting of a specialized incident that took place, and I wrote a brief summary for your benefit. In May of 2018, Steve Conno, who happened, is the wastewater superintendent for the district, approached me and requested some assistance with a property located at 592 Park Drive. The wastewater division has a schedule of maintenance that they perform throughout the community. Located to the rear of 592 Park Drive is a manhole sewer access point. The district maintains a recorded easement in, toward the rear of the property where that manhole is. Mr. Conno and members of staff made an effort to access the property by contacting the homeowner. The homeowner refused entry to staff based on his disagreement with the easement. We made several attempts, amicably and politely, to show him that the district had easement and access to the property. He still declined. The decision, all our observations and our reporting were brought to Scott, and Mr. Carroll made the decision to refer this to district council. Council recommended that we seek what's called an inspection warrant. An inspection warrant for the benefit of the board is no different than a search warrant, but a step-down version of it. And what it is, is you contact the district magistrate or court, and you seek permission to conduct an inspection of a property. The, you, the affiant, which was Mr. Conno, provides a summary, a probable cause statement to the court. The court does, makes a finding. If they agree with us, they issue an inspection warrant. It's not as dramatic as, say, for example, a search warrant, which would be a no-knock or forced entry. The decision was made to resolve this as amicably, as peacefully and quietly as we could. We decided to do a posting of the property, giving, I think, no less than 48 hours' notice, and, which we did. The date of the inspection, I went out to the property and made contact with the homeowner's wife, just as a last effort to resolve this, you know, just letting the person know that we had obtained an inspection warrant from the court, and we would like access, which fortunately for us and all parties involved, she decided to grant access, open the gate for us, and within the span of an hour, district staff performed their inspection duties, CCTV and cleaning of the property, and then we left without further incident. Reason, our rationale for it was that access point served as not only that property, but it was, there was a public impact in the fact that that access point allows the cleaning of line that services many properties in the adjoining area. So you could see that we needed to push forward with that. But I'd be glad to provide you with any answers, if you have any questions regarding the incident or anything else.
The inspection, so the court ordered, court, we get a court order for the inspection?
Yes, sir. What ends up happening, like, I mean, in my terms, inspection warrant and a search warrant are very, very similar. You present to the court a set of facts, what's called a probable cause declaration. The probable cause declaration is brought to a judge. The judge makes an evaluation based off of the facts stated, your sworn statement, and then, in accordance with the law, will issue a finding. I agree with you, and now I, the magistrate of the court, am ordering the Costa Mesa Sanitarium District to perform said inspection. At that point, we really don't have a choice. The judge is now saying, "I order you, CMSD, to..."
Did you go in the yard?
Pardon me?
Did you go in the yard?
I did, sir. Yes, I did.
Just out of curiosity, was there anything in that yard, or was, is there anything out of the ordinary that would have made the homeowner not want authorities in his backyard, or is it just a, do you think it's just a matter of his principle not wanting us back there?
Yes, sir. The yard appeared no different than many, many yards I've seen. There was no, nothing out of the ordinary, that I would note. I, if you're asking for my perception of it, it just, it was a disagreement over the easement access, and the person just dug their, you know, feet in the ground and wouldn't allow the district to...
I was hoping you were going to say that, I guess, because, I mean, unfortunately, I watch live PD too much, and I watch, you know, having a son in law enforcement, I want to see what he really does for a living.
Right, sir, yeah.
And oftentimes, they run into hazards, or they run into something that would want the homeowner to, would have the homeowner being inclined to not want the authorities in there, so...
Yes, sir. No, no, there was nothing out of the ordinary. It was, the whole interaction was very cordial. We try to be as non-invasive as we can. Every effort to resolve that prior to seeking an inspection warrant was made.
You dealt with just the wife at that point?
Actually, at that point, I dealt with both, the homeowner and his wife, or I guess they're both homeowners. Just, like I said, sir, we did everything to resolve it as amicably as we could, and once we've exhausted those measures, we had no choice. We were compelled to, the only way to get into that backyard was with court order.
You know, that homeowner being a former Costa Mesa official makes me kind of wonder why he didn't...
I don't understand the rationale, sir, yeah.
All right.
Yes, sir.
From your May to June 2nd report, there's been a pretty good uptick of scavenging?
Yes, sir.
What about the, from June 2nd to today, has there been a same increase?
You know, sir, I would say yes. The problem with the scavenging investigations that I encounter is with a marked vehicle, the word, once the presence of the district vehicle is in the alley, I think most folks pretty much are aware, kind of like, you know, the referee's around, so everybody just refrains from doing what they normally do, knowing that eventually I will leave that area and then resume. So my job has been, has been turned to more sedentary. You sit in an alley and you wait for folks to kind of work their way into the alley, and then you just sit there, and I hate to use the term "lying wait," but you, you sit in a good position of advantage and observe what's going on, and eventually, someone will come along, and that's how I've gotten, the numbers I'm getting, because with a marked vehicle, unfortunately, it's a good, it's a two-edged sword. You know, it's very visible for deterrent and all that, however, when you're trying to actually execute the job, the mission, it makes it a little bit more difficult. But yes, sir, in short story, the, there's a significant uptick in the activity, in the alleys, in the hotspots that I've identified for scavenging. It's just the nature of the beast. We've had an influx of folks from outside of our community, or from within the community coming in, and we're starting to see the numbers pop up.
I'd mention to Ed, and Scott, I'm going to direct this to you, because I'd mention to Ed that, you know, the alley behind my office, between Royal Palm and Enoch, I noticed yesterday in particular, a gentleman who had the gates to the enclosure open, and he had, he made quite a, quite a big haul, but they're all, you know, dumpsters. Do we need to report that to the city, or does the city really care? I mean...
That's pretty much, it's a city function, but, you know, it's good cooperation. We can, I mean, if Ed's not busy, we can always send him out there and persuade the individual to leave.
Might be something we want to put on a future liaison meeting to...
Sure, yeah, definitely, because they probably just call the police.
Anything else for Ed this morning?
No.
Good, good.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure, thank you.
I have a feeling next, you know, with the 4th of July coming up, the public interest uptick, even more of scavenging stuff, I think, with the weather, you know, with the weather getting better and stuff, and the amount of partying and stuff that goes into
... I was going to bring that up when we...
Fourth of July, you'll probably see that. Thanks, Ed.
Yes, sir, my pleasure.
Scott, item two?
I think, Mr. President, actually, item two and three were just combined, just for your information, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to...
Any questions on the organics tonnage or the solid waste report?
Do you find, Scott, that the organics are going down a little bit?
Yes, I noticed that they're going down, so it's possibly...
Aren't watering their lawns, and it's not growing, I, you know...
Yeah, because, you know, compared to previous years, they're down a little bit, but that saves us money partially, because, you know...
Although, last year, we had all that rain, so that's probably why it was more green.
Scott, do we still have buckets? You know, the little buckets?
Yeah, they're available here at the yard, right here at H2.
Because I need two of them for different people.
We'll get you, we'll get you, sure. The city, the city has a responsibility to meet the 75% criteria, so in one of our near-term liaison committee, I would like the question asked about what are their strategies to meet that 75% criteria, because I think we have a strategic goal to get to 75%, but I think in board discussions, we're not so sure that, you know, we want to pay the price to get there. So, and I may ask that question Friday, or in a future liaison committee, because 2020 is not very far away, and the board and, or the council would have to take action, you know, that the vendors, the trash haulers, local trash haulers, the burden is going to fall on them, and there's not much time left.
Scott, you know, tagging onto this, since the liaison committee's on Friday, can we still get it on the agenda?
I, the agenda's posted, right? I mean, we all done with the, I mean, do you want to add another item to the agenda? Could we do that?
I think it'd just be a discussion item, and Bob could speak to it, you know, for months, and say, hey, this, you know, I mean, I'm just, just a thought, because we have three days.
Well, I think at the end, there's probably open, I don't know.
Whatever you think, but I know we have time to add it if we have, if we wanted to...
It's pretty full right now. My suggestion is to wait till the next meeting. It's really full right now. It's, it's...
The city has a ton of lives.
I mean, we'd be there for hours.
Well, either that, or meet with Hatch, or whoever, you know, whoever is responsible for that, you know, to give, to get an idea as soon as possible.
Their plan was that they're going to have, with their new contracts, they're going to have, make the vendors that they use get up to 75%.
No, I expect so. And, you know, maybe they'll say 80%, and since we're such a small percentage of the total...
You know, I, I kind of like the idea of setting up a special meeting with the city, rather than bonding the school district and the water district. I mean, it might get diluted.
That's true, that's true.
I think if we do it on...
Oh, yeah, well, that, yeah, any, any meeting...
...directly affects us, I think, and it might be better to just meet, like you said...
Yeah, I don't care how, you know, how we, they've got to be thinking about it.
Do it hope, we hope so. Okay. So... When's that report due for?
You know, the city staff, they contact us, and we give them the information. I just know, like, Nubila submitted information to the city in Newport Beach last week, so it's, I don't know when this due, that we just get the information from, they... We get an email from the city, they tell us what they want, what they need, and we give it to them.
Okay. Well, I'd, I'd suggest sooner than later. A year and a half is not much time for a big decision.
Is that the 2020, right?
Yeah, supposedly.
And that may change after the November election, too, with a new governor, who knows?
No, it's presently the law, and I don't think the legislature will change it.
I hope not. Okay, let's go to item four, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. So last, last month, I presented you the survey results to the business community regarding the proposed program the board was recommending to the city partner with regarding portable restrooms. And the consultant who did that survey wasn't available at that time, she was, she was out of, out of the state, so we invited her today, Johnson, who we hired to perform the study. A little bit about Deb Johnson, she is a former elected official, former city council of the city of Tustin. She now lives in Newport Beach. She runs a really, I think, a very outstanding organization where she gets recovering alcoholics and addicts jobs, and get them back into society. These people were once homeless, and now they're recovering from alcohol and drug addictions, and she gets them good-paying jobs, just now they can start contributing to the society. And that's what I think more programs need to do, is, is solve this homeless solution. When you define these homeless individuals, when they're going to get, they need to get sober, and then, then they need to contribute to society, and by doing that, they need good-paying jobs, and Deb has made a significant factor to those improvements. And she's also serves on the homeless for solutions network committee with me. So she did a, she did a great job on the survey. She's here today to kind of talk to you about the process, and really to be able to answer any of your questions, so I'm going to turn it over to Deb.
Good morning, Honorable President and members. My name is Deb Johnson. I'm so sorry I couldn't be here, but I will give you the reason. I went, I visited all the baseball stadiums in the country, and I finished off, I went to Miami, and Atlanta was my last one, so, a bucket list. Do I know what?
State, that's his goal.
His goal, so I just finished that goal, and it was...
All 30 of them?
I went to all 30 of them. It was a 25-year accomplishment, so I finished it up, so I did it.
Do we really want to speak?
(laughing) Yeah.
I'm at 26 right now.
So we can talk about it later. The, and I can tell you which is my favorite stadium, and which one has the best cotton candy, because I tried them at every single stadium, just so you know.
Milwaukee and Pittsburgh, right?
I love Milwaukee, yeah. Brewers is my favorite, and the best cotton candy is at Dodger Stadium, of all of them, so, so, you know, from all the ones I tried.
Now that you've started off on a really sore foot...
So, so we'll, we'll start. So I can answer questions, but I also can, there's a couple of things I want to share with you, because, yes, I was a former elected official, and I was a bank consultant for many years, but I've been focusing on helping these people return to society. So, you know, from the survey, you can see the results, that people aren't, the businesses were not happy about the homeless. Everybody agree that? That was, it was an issue. But we can complain about something, but as my kids will tell you, I won't complain about something, I'll figure a way to make it better, because complaining does nothing. So I run a nonprofit called Second Chance Orange County, and we get them jobs, and we mentor them and coach them. But on the study, what I wanted to focus on, and then I have some numbers to help you with, is, is the businesses. Keep in mind, this is the businesses in a specific area that we, that we polled, correct? Everybody understand we found specific streets, and we polled them? But out of seven, seven being, you know, the worst problem in the world, the businesses, almost everyone answered this question, 280 people answered it. It's a six out of a seven saying we have a huge problem. Well, all of us know, if you, if you drive down the street, you see that that's a huge problem, so what do we do about it? So noticing the problem is a big, is a big part of it. But on question number three, which is, do you believe, and this is what all of you were trying, this is the major question you wanted to know, right? First of all, is there a problem? And second of all, do they like the solution that you're thinking about spending a lot of money on, right? So let's talk about it. So, "Do you believe having a supervised public restroom could alleviate the issues?" And what did they say? Almost 50% said, "No, that's not the solution." Okay, so it's good we don't spend money on something that the people aren't going to think that's a solution. So that was question number three. Question number four, my opinion on supervised public toilets. Overwhelmingly, they said it was horrible. 37.9, which is literally 38%, said it was a horrible idea in their opinion. Now, what's hard, sometimes what's, what's interesting to separate out is, are people's opinion on homelessness, and then their opinions on the toilets, right? So it's, so they, it is a problem, but they don't see that solving it. And I truly believe if people identify something as a problem, and you offer them a good solution, and you're willing to pay for the solution, they will scream, "Yes, please, give it to us. I wish they were here." One of the questions, one of the responses was, "I wish they were here already," right? I did that, that was on purpose, because that tells you how strongly they would have wanted something. If they said, "I wish it was already here," that would have been a very, very strong answer, and we didn't receive that answer. Again, you're asking another question. Question number seven, "I believe that having a supervised public restroom near a business will have a positive," this is an interesting question, "will have a positive impact. Not only do I like it, but it'll be good for my business." They didn't like this one. This is a strongly disagree as well, with close to 50%. Okay? So it wasn't, they didn't, they didn't tread lightly, like, "I'm not sure, maybe," and then you think we've got to do something differently. So, and the majority of the people that answered the survey were actually the business owners, to give you an idea of who answered the surveys. So this is what I found. Now, something else I think is important is, I don't know if you've seen it, and I have it here, and I know you don't like leaving meetings with a lot of paper, so I didn't make you copies. However, if you're interested, two statistic, so I studied statistics at grad school, so that's kind of why I like it and I'm into it. But a couple of things that are really important, I don't know if you've seen them, but this report is, was done by the Health Care Agency, Orange County, and the Sheriff Coroner, and it's probably one of the largest reports. It was done in 2017, which I find very, very relevant. I have this report, and the other most recent report that was done by UCI professors just recently, it was a homeless study, homelessness in Orange County, the cost to our community. Have any of you seen either of those reports? Raise your hand if you've seen them before. Okay. These reports are important, because they give you the statistical analysis of what's going on with homelessness, so I'll give you a quick overview. In the survey, this is what the survey participant said, "What is your major factors of why you're homeless?" This is, you kind of want to understand this. This is what they self-revealed, and then I'll give you reality based on me doing this for three years. They say alcohol or drugs are 22% of the reasons. Well, well, I know it's, it's, it's much larger than that. How do I know? Because most of my referrals are coming from temporary shelters, mercy house referrals, and so we know that the population addicted to drugs and alcohol is much higher. Securing or retaining living wage jobs, 40%, that's the reason for the homelessness. Finding or retaining affordable housing, 36%. Family issues, 28%. Mental health, 17. Physical health, 13. And released from jail and prison, 7%. But I'm going to give you some numbers for Costa Mesa. First of all, I'll give you the county. The drug and alcohol overdose deaths in the entire county from 2012 to 2015 were 1,011. 75% of them were deemed accidental. Where do you think Costa Mesa falls in these numbers? One, two, out of all the cities in the county?
Seven.
Okay, anyone else? I don't have any prizes if you're close, but anyone else?
Six.
Six, keep going.
Four.
Arlene? Get her, somebody get her a prize. Good, that's correct.
I'd say four, too. Schaefer's think...
Okay, Schaefer's think alike. So four is correct. I don't have any prizes, but you feel good you got it correct, fourth. Anybody, the city with the largest? Number of drug and alcohol overdose.
Anaheim.
Okay, you're close. So Anaheim is one. Huntington Beach and St. Ana, it's the kind of thing you don't want to tie for, is both Anaheim 116, Huntington Beach and Santa Ana 87. Costa Mesa comes in... Costa Mesa comes in four. So we have a problem with, obviously, with the drug and alcohols, which is a difficult, which is one of the main reasons these people become homeless. Orange County has seen an increase in alcohol and drug-related deaths in the last twelve years. I remember when I was in high school and college, it wasn't this, it wasn't an issue. It wasn't some, it wasn't big at all. It's completely changed, this generation. And the interesting thing I want to point out to you, if I tell you the age of my clients, it's going to amaze you. Anybody want to guess? It's another one, it's a really important one because I can tell you the last five, six clients, and I've taken a lot of clients in the last couple of years. Anybody want to guess their age? No? No. I want you all to, you're going to fall over in those big comfortable chairs. Guess again. Fifty-five? I'm not kidding. When I stand next to these people, what scares me is, like, one of them had a birthday a week before mine, one of them had a week, they might look ten, twenty years older than me, but most of these people are now in their fifties. Now, I'm going to give you good news. The good news is they finally realized either the meth isn't working, they don't want to live this life anymore, they got kicked out of the riverbed or the plaza and their doors have closed. So I'm giving you good news and I'm so glad that I'm doing this nonprofit because now they have a choice. Because what do they do? We don't want them wandering the streets and that's been the issue. So we want them to have jobs. The goal is really so they can afford to rent a room somewhere. If we get them a job, they can rent a room somewhere and get out of the shelters because the shelters are temporary. So that's why we try to get them good paying jobs. Okay. There's a lot of mental health issues as well as the other thing. The other thing I want to tell you is, just in the whole United States, there was forty-seven thousand fifty-five drug overdose deaths in two thousand and fourteen. So it's not just here. All right. If you want to know the three-year average of hospitalizations, the other thing is they use the hospitals. So I, we work currently across some Hoag hospitals and I was, I walked through the emergency room to go to the cafeteria. They use a lot of the emergency rooms. The average for all the cities is five thousand four hundred and sixty-five per year in a population of three point one million, Orange County. This is hospitalizations, just them going to the hospitals for drug and alcohol, which is, if you really have an emergency and you want to go to Hoag, sadly, a lot of people that are waiting are going in for drug and alcohol. So I have these studies if you're interested. I am more than happy to answer any questions you have on the survey or anything that we're trying to do. And Scott and I sit in that meeting on Thursdays and we're really trying to solve the issue. It's a matter of how do we do things differently? I like to shake things up and I am very verbal, he'll say, in that meeting, saying, we can't keep do, insanity is doing the same thing over and over again. We got to get them jobs. I beg people to take my clients' jobs. I said, if you don't take them, you're going to be paying for them anyway because they're going to show up at the ER, they're going to die, they're going to use your police department. So it's a matter of begging people, if you know anyone, that will employ our clients, which are these people right here. Question?
I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but I don't think, when Jim first brought, Jim Frigman first brought this issue up and we talked about it, I don't, I don't think of us trying to find a solution to the homeless issue. You know, we were talking about reinstituting or putting in some dignity. The city has chosen to close the restrooms. I remember I made the comment at a city liaison meeting, you know, you close the restrooms and I understand closing them because they're used for purposes they shouldn't be. But, you know, if I have my five-year-old grandson who needs to go to the bathroom when we're at the park, can't, it's closed. But Jim was so specific about the dignity factor and putting these restrooms in to help. We're not putting restrooms in, even going to solve the homeless issue. These businesses, I was surprised and so many of these business owners in the comments saying things like, you know, they block my door all the time, they're always asking for money, they smoke in front of my business, you know, they urinate, that's not the way that one person said it, but they urinate or they leave feces all over. For heaven's sakes, here's a solution to part of that.
Right.
And I'm a business, I own a business and my complex had to put in gates because we're right next to an alley and we had a lot of homeless coming through using the restrooms they found, people passed out from drug use in our little complex. But there still has to be some dignity of these folks. They, there's a mental illness is as big an issue and we're just, we were just trying to give them some dignity. Give us, not a solution to homeless, so I don't know. I'm surprised, I was really surprised when I first read the results and, I don't know, I guess.
Well, what, the key question about it is sometimes you, you can, you don't always have to get permission, you understand this, right? To do something good. So that's the thing is, what I thought was nice is you're asking people's opinion on something. And opinions are as different as the people on this planet, everyone has a different one. And it could be prejudices that they have for a long time and they don't understand, you know, what it is. Yeah, and I have traveled all over as well and when I'm in San Francisco, I use those public restrooms wherever I am with my daughter and we have to use them, there's no other choice. And they automatically close and they automatically clean and I thank God they're there because I have no idea. It would ruin our dignity because where else would we go? So I completely understand it.
If you look at what Starbucks is going through over the use of restrooms, you know, you look at what our, one of our city council members said about the five of us, simply because we were trying to offer something to help, you know? I'm just really baffled by all this.
What do you want to do?
I wanted, I probably want to move to Costa, no, like Costa Rica.
Costa Rica.
What I want to do is to have people realize that it's a, it's such a huge issue. And we're not going to solve it by putting restrooms in, but we're at least taking some steps to help the situation. That's really what-
No, I'm not arguing.
I have a question.
Sure.
On your survey, did you survey like the businesses separately and then the residents?
No, we just did businesses. So this is what's interesting. So we just did businesses in the district where most of the homeless hang out, which is really on Seventeen Street. It was a very specific, very specific area of businesses that we polled. We didn't do residential, which is completely different. It would be a completely different, and it would be a larger survey. We'd have to, it would cost more money, obviously, to do this survey. And you get completely different answers from the survey.
Well, the only reason I'm asking this is because people were confused. They thought, the residences thought we were putting restrooms in their areas and they didn't want that. So they got excited over it and said to the businesses, this is what's going to happen. And of course, then the businesses said, I don't want it either, you know, because it shouldn't be in your area when it's needed around town. So this is, I think it was confusion and I don't think the newspaper helped any either.
I didn't talk to the newspaper, so that's, which is good. You kind of wanted to do, you wanted to do the survey just to be done.
But I mean, they put a portable one like you do for sports.
But you mean the-
That is what we were talking about, was a larger one, one that had actually access to washing your hands, to, you know, taking care of yourself and that we would actually monitor it time-wise. It wasn't brought out right as far as I'm concerned.
Well, there's, there's two different things. So I studied marketing in undergrad, I got a business undergrad and then I got a master's in a grad school. So the first part is, if you really want something, we got to do a marketing campaign. So if it's something that you say we really, really want, then we got to go about this differently. In this case, what I was hired for is to do a very specific survey, a businesses to see if they wanted something. But if you, if you together, as a body, decide you want something, then we do, you do a more effective marketing campaign and you do more explaining and teaching and working in groups and it's completely done differently. And again, you weren't, you weren't asking to permanently put the, you were just asking to do a trial on these. It was a pilot and it did say that in the survey, it was a pilot. But it wasn't, but it was kind of brought in and you're right, sometimes the media can have a different effect on something regardless of what the real outcome is. That is difficult, but it would be a longer-term process if it's something you really want. It would have to be done differently and we just have to market it.
Did they, did the business, were the businesses fearful that having restrooms there would make the homelessness solution worse? I mean, they strongly disagreed with having them near their businesses. Like number seven.
What question would that be? Seven?
Seven.
It was pretty much, if you look at the numbers, it was so strong analytically on strongly agree. The maybe not sure was the second highest, so. No, I'm good.
The comments, I don't think the businesses felt that it would make it any worse. They just wanted it to go away, period.
Right, I'm agreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you. And that page just amazed me, the comments. I didn't, I didn't expect so many comments, to be honest with you. That just amazed me like crazy that they, they wrote so much. They wrote more than I anticipated on it, which tells you something, I want to point out something. On most surveys, people do not write as much as they did on this survey, just so you know. Because it takes time. That means someone had to sit there and some of you know how some people type. Wanted, so they took the time to write that? That tells you these results were real because if they weren't real, you'd have a lot of numbers and you wouldn't have a lot of writing. That's how you know. That's another way to evaluate a survey is when the people write comments and you read the comments and they, they're legitimate comments, then you know they were real.
You know, we, Bob and I are on the Orange County sanitation district and we had a groundwater replenishment project that, you know, treated bad water and made it good, you know?
I've drank in it.
We spent, what, four million dollars at least on educating the public. We'd go out to, you know, different clubs, different city councils and we did that for two or three years before we ever said, this is where, this is what we're going to do. Well, that's what you got to do. You got to, you got to educate these people. They don't have any idea of what you're talking about. And then when it finally came down to it, we did not have one organized objection to that project. Well, it's kind of akin to what we're talking about and-
I agree.
You know, and there's so many layers to it. You can't just say, I don't want to see a bathroom there, you know? I mean, that's the easiest thing to do, you know? And we know that, but it's, it's the most humane thing at this point we can afford. But, and I was under the impression that Costa Mesa was really making some progress in reducing the number of homeless people in the last couple of years. And I don't know if that's true or not, but we're at least addressing the issue more, more so than some other cities.
Okay, we've got like three quick questions.
That's okay. You have all my attention and my time because I missed you last time, so I'm here for you.
I'll ask them first.
Okay.
How did the homeless make contact with you?
I beg your pardon?
How did they make contact with you?
Okay, question number one.
When you placement a job, what is the average, how much do they earn per year, basically?
Okay, and number three?
Three. Just go with those two for right now.
Okay, then you can, okay. How, we take all, so Second Chance Orange County takes all of our clients through referrals and they're referred from other clients that we've helped. Seems like we helped somebody, they tell their friends and they tell their friends. The second referral source is through our partners. And what I mean by our partners is Mercy House Illumination Foundation, which houses the homeless. I get a lot from the group we belong to, which is Costa Mesa, the task force, the homeless network task force. All those people understand what we've been doing and they give us referrals as well. We don't take very, there's no walk-ins, so we purposely have a P.O. box, there's no walk-in. So it's all through referrals and the advantage of referrals is we've got lots of check systems. So we know where they live. So for example, I had someone, he hasn't returned our calls, but the person at Mercy House said, I'll tell you what happened. All right, so we have, we know where they are. We're watching them, that way we have more accountability of where they are and it seems to work well. I'll give you some statistics if you'd like. Hundred percent of our clients that we've helped since we've been doing this are alive today. I just read you the number of deaths. I'm almost embarrassed to say it, but I almost want to cry because it's amazing. Because we give them a mentor, we coach them, we spend a year with them. I've got many of them that sent me their two-year sobriety chips and if we didn't get them a job, some of them would have been in prison for a long time or dead. And these guys were, first couple of clients were fifty, fifty, and then I had a young twenty-eight, thirty-year-old. And eighty percent of them are working, so, and we get, we get them back into school. Some of them have mental illness, so if we can get them just to get their high school degree, that's, that's good. Keep them busy, right? If we can get them to volunteer. The object of the game is to get them to become productive members of society. That's how they get in contact with. The average earnings is thirteen fifty an hour. I mean, we fight pretty hard to get them good. I've got a couple of jobs where they make fifteen an hour. So when somebody says I want to pay a minimum, I say, no. I'm kind of stubborn that way because otherwise, if you look at the reasons why people end up being homeless, they're working, they just can't afford to live anywhere in the county. So we're really hard to get them more. So their wages are much better than average. And you had another question.
Well, my third question is, how many people have you placed in these jobs?
So we've helped seventy-eight people. How many have we placed in jobs? I would say some of them, some of the newer ones we have, we're still in the process of them. I'm going to say, God, I can't, I don't have the exact number, so we've helped seventy-eight of them. I'm going to say about a little over forty percent of them, we've gotten jobs. But some of them are new ones, so some of these people we just did our training for, so it's been good.
For one year period or what?
No, it's been, we, this is, so we've been in business for, we've been in business, we're a nonprofit, five oh one three C. So this is our third year. And I did no marketing for almost two years, which means it was all just referrals. Didn't ask for a grant, didn't ask for any money. I just did, I just, let me see, what I did is I, I used my marketing. I did, I tested to see if what we had was, I wanted to see if our Kool-Aid was good and if it worked and if it was sustainable before I asked anybody for a dime. So I self-funded it for two years. And then we started saying, this works and our statistics are good. And so then we started asking for grant money to help. But if, but the key thing we need is employers. That's the hardest thing for me is to beg the employers to give somebody a chance. And we've got several that have hired three of our people, which is huge.
Are you familiar with Fort Worth, Texas program?
Yeah, Fort Worth and L.A.
The city actually employs these people.
Yep, I am.
And they get grant money and it's a very successful, from what I hear, program.
I love it and L.A. just agreed to do it and I have been, I've asked, I've talked to the city manager in Costa Mesa about it. I've talked to Newport, I, I'm begging them to do it. I want them to take our people because here we've got the people in their city that I want to get jobs and then they'll have good experience on their resumes. The hardest thing is, working on a resume yesterday, I did the most creative writing you have ever seen in your life because it's tough. Mostly when they have huge gaps where they haven't worked for a while. But yeah, I wish, help me. I want the cities to employ.
Close to Chamber of Commerce?
I, you know, it's interesting, I had, one of the ones, there's the head of Irvine Chamber of Commerce, I keep saying you need to meet with me because I need to speak to get the members of them to agree to hire a certain number of people. No, but if you have a contact, that would be great. Because if I can get them in a group to all commit to say, I'll hire one, I'll hire one, maybe if I get the group to get all excited about it, I think that would help. Because again, the hardest thing is for these people to take our clients, to take a chance on them. And keep in mind, these people might not have worked in twenty years. Some of them haven't worked in thirty years and they've been on drugs for a long time, so. If you, the best thing you could give me would be people that will hire our clients. That's the best thing. Other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure. My pleasure.
I personally think we got our four thousand dollars worth out of this, so.
I'm very happy.
Yeah, I, I don't think this is the last we're going to hear of this. I think it's going to be something that I know several of us, if not all of us, are passionate about making sure we-
Keep me in mind. Use my analytical brain because that's the part I like sharing. So thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Deb, very much.
Pleasure.
All right, Scott, so we'll move item seven up to this point now.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So, as you know, we have a hotspot committee that meets quarterly every three months and that committee consists of me, Rob Hammer, the district engineer, Steve Conno, our waste water superintendent, our cleaning crew, so our two-man cleaning crew, our inspector, and then Joe Jenkins from EEC. And we meet every three months to go over the hotspot and the goal, according to our history, the goal is to reduce it to less than thirty hotspots, which we have achieved that goal, or actually at the twenty hotspots, which is great. But we continue to evaluate the hotspots as good as down as far as we can. The last meeting we had back in N.A., as we were wrapping up the meeting, the crew brought to our attention that hotspot number forty-four, which is located on Bristol Street and Randolph Avenue, they were seeing an unusual large amount of grease in the system. We knew there was always, that hotspot was fogged, we knew it was fogging up, it was just an unusual amount of, a large amount of grease in there that they haven't seen before in the past. So we directed EEC, who manages our fog- So we directed EEC, who manages our fog program, who does inspections of, of the restaurants, go and do a focus inspection of the camp, because that's where we believe the fog was coming from, the camp over on Bristol Street. And there's about a dozen restaurants there. So they made that, that inspection. One day they found over half, over half of our non-compliant clients, which is, you have that list in front of your staff report, which I also shared with the board last week. And some board members were a little bit upset with that non-compliance. And so they requested this item to be placed on tonight's agenda, or today's agenda, and invite Joe Jenkins from EEC here today to, to give you an overview on how they inspect the restaurants, what they found in the camp, and also be able to answer any questions. So I'm going to, I'm going to give you some more information about their inspection program.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you again, board, for having me today, appreciate that. I apologize in advance for the handouts I provided you, but figured sometimes it's better seeing them on a handout than looking at the screen. I thought you guys didn't like handouts, so, sorry. So I think we can start probably with the, the map document. And I'll just give an overview of the area and kind of what we're dealing with, with here. So as Scott mentioned, the hotspot in this location is the south part here of Bristol Street. And as it turns, the line turns and then comes up Randolph. I believe they're, they're cleaning this location every three months. So it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, a location that receives a, a lot of grease and needs a lot of maintenance. And the biggest issue here is it's, it's just high-density restaurants. You have two different campuses here that discharge to this line. And we're focusing on the camp here, which also have the lab, which is on the, the south side of Bristol Street. They comes in, in generally the same location. The yellow line on the map here is the private sewer line for the camp. And you can see all the branches in there. And as it drains, and its point of connection, it crosses Bristol Street and then, and then connects at that point. Up, upstream from this connection here, there's, there's not a lot of other flow coming into this, this part of the line. When you look at it on the video, there's almost no flow. And so what happens is, as the flow comes in from the camp and hits the line on Bristol Street, you get the, the flow coming in, it just kind of like, goes like this into the line. So some of it pushes upstream, and you get a lot of accumulation on that upstream part with no flow to continue to flush that down. And so that's probably the, one of the main issues we're, we're seeing in this, from the CCTV. So the, the facilities, and actually on the, the table I provided you previously from our inspections, we, there's a lot of facilities within the camp, and not all of them discharge to the line on Bristol. That initial table was in our, our previous email. You can look at that. And, and I, I'm sorry, not this one, the one from the, um, the summary. That, that's okay. We can go back to the map. Anyways, there, there was, there was a few on there, like Ummami Burger and Mesa, that actually discharged to the north up to Baker Street. And so we're, just wanted to focus, I just wanted to focus today on the FSCs are actually contributing to this hotspot. And there's actually eight locations here. You can see the, from the points on the map. There's two different colors here, the, the orange points are facilities that are connected to grease interceptors. The blue ones are facilities that do not have a grease interceptor. We typically inspect the orange facilities quarterly, because they're hotspot-related and connected to grease interceptors. And the blue ones historically have been inspected annually. And, and so you can see just their general layout and, and location and positioning. So we can move on now to the table. So this table summarizes a, a year's worth of inspections on these facilities. And you can see the, the various non-compliant issues. One of the, when you first look at a, at a table that shows a lot of non-compliance, it does look like we're having a lot of issues with them and a lot of compliance issues. But when you look at it in more detail, you can see, um, over the past year, there's only been two instances where we found grease interceptors exceeding twenty-five percent rule, you know, which is actually not bad, it's a good thing. I mean, there's certainly issues here, which I'll get to, but just to explain it, when, that's kind of the main fog violation, when we want to look at and see, uh, when we're trying to identify contributors. The other non-compliances are, are record-keeping issues. Each facility has a fog binder at their location. And they have log sheets where they keep pumping invoices, receipts. They track their employee training. In these binders, basically, it's their fog program information. And when our inspector goes to these facilities and does their inspection, they ask, you know, can I see your binder? Can I see what's in your binder? If they're not able to either provide the binder or provide any sort of records at all, then our inspector will find them in non-compliance. And so that doesn't necessarily mean that they're not doing their employee training or that they're not pumping their interceptor. It just means they couldn't prove that they were doing it at the time of the inspection. And, and that kind of explains why you would have a facility in compliant, compliance, three months before, but then in non-compliance, three months later. You know, nothing's changed. It's just, at that time, they weren't able to provide their information. So looking at, I guess, uh, what I want to talk about is the types of interceptors these facilities are connected to. I think that helps the discussion a little bit, too. Uh, you can see the column GRE size. So two facilities, Eco Pizzeria and Bar and Old Vine Cafe, are both connected to fifteen-hundred-gallon concrete gravity grease interceptors. We have two facilities, Taco Asylum and V Italy, that are, are connected to what's called a Trapzilla from Thermaco. It's a hundred-gallon unit. And I provided the diagram on what that looks like. The, the reasoning for them putting in the Trapzilla unit was because of their location within the camp. They, they have space constraints that won't support a large concrete gravity grease interceptor. So rather than having them put in a smaller unit that goes like inside the kitchen, that's twenty or thirty gallons, they, they put in these larger units that has more volume to handle their, their grease production. And then the, the last one, Old Vine Cafe, is a facility that's been there for a very long time. And they have, uh, the smaller-sized twenty-gallon unit. So we can focus on, on the two fog non-compliances. First, Old Vine Cafe, um, they had exceeded their, their twenty-five percent rule, but they, they had ten inches of floating fog. So when we go out and inspect the grease interceptors, what the inspectors do is they have a tube that core samples the interceptor. And you get basically an example of how much floating fog is at the top. You know, oils and greases that are lighter than water will rise to the surface, and solid food particles will settle at the bottom of the interceptor. And so you measure the floating fog and the solids and so on. For Old Vine, their floating fog was ten inches. Their solid particles were five inches, so a total of fifteen inches. And you divide that fifteen inches over the total fluid depth, and that gives your, your overall fog percentage. And so in this case, they were at about thirty percent full on their interceptor.
Quick question, is that because they're not pumping it often enough?
Um, you know, not necessarily. They, they currently pump quarterly, I'm sorry, I'm, um, and it doesn't look like on this, they had documented when their previous pumping was. So if, it depends on when it was pumped previously. If they had pumped it a month ago and now it's at thirty percent, then probably quarterly isn't enough pumping for them. And that's kind of the issue with the V Italy place, let me get to that one. If they had pumped it three months ago and it's almost due for pumping and they're at thirty percent, then probably once every three months is, is the right frequency for them. You know, the, the twenty-five percent rule, the twenty-five percent measurement is really used as a guide to establish the correct pumping frequencies. So if you're in that twenty to thirty percent range in there at, at the time of pumping, then you're at the right frequency typically. You're going to have fluctuations based on how busy the businesses are, you know, quarterly by quarter. Certainly, when we get into the summer months, more people are out enjoying themselves, eating out. So you might have an increase in business. And so they were, um, out and, and then eventually had the, the interceptor pumped on June fifth. And so, and I'll, I'll talk about, on our, for our ongoing approach, as far as we're going to try to evaluate, too, if their pumping frequencies are, are adequate. So we'll get to that. But, so moving to, to V Italy. And in our assessment, based on our inspection results, you know, this is the facility I think we should focus on probably the most. Uh, initially, if you, if you look at the table, they, they, they've established a quarterly pumping frequency, but weren't being very consistent with that quarterly pumping frequency. They were letting it go longer than that. They had an issue back in January where the, their Trapzilla that they had was very full. They needed to get pumped out, and then they had to jet their sewer lines to clean out their sewer lines. And then, uh, when, you know, their, their fluid depth is much shallower. And if you, if you go back to the, the Trapzilla design, when we're, we hold the Trapzillas also to the twenty-five percent rule. You know, any device, we're going to hold to that standard. Uh, but if you look at the, the way the bottom is, it's a conical shaped. So all their su, their solid food particles will funnel to that center point. And then when we inspect them, I'm sorry, I have to step away a little bit from the mic. We essentially put our core sampling tool down to the center. There's a center hole here where you have, basically, all the floating materials gets trapped inside this center chamber. And then you put the tube straight down into the solids here. So you're, you're actually getting, when you see the, how many solids they have within the device, it's, it's a little bit not representative of how much food particles are in there, because it's all being forced there. But it's a very conservative measurement, which is, you know, a good way to do it.
What kind of food do they serve there?
It's Italian.
I guess fettali.
Yeah.
Would indicate.
Yeah, so it's, it's full service, it's Italian, pretty much.
Did I see something on there about the interceptors under their patio?
Yeah. So it's, it's a little bit tough to access and where they put it. Yeah, they have like a, a little hatch thing that you have to fold up, and then it's down kind of under the patio. And so it's, you can't really go in there and inspect them when they're in full food service. You have people sitting out there on the patio.
I would not, I'm, I'm sure if they were sitting out there eating and to open the grease interceptor, they'll probably not be very conducive to that.
Yeah, they don't appreciate it. Yeah. So, yeah, so most of these, these areas, like the camp especially, we, we try and hit them before they, they're opening for business, while they're doing food prep.
I had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
On one, you talked about the binders.
Mm-hmm.
Now, are they responsible for getting a binder? Or do you give them a binder when they open their business, or?
Correct. So when they open their business, we conduct what's called a permitting inspection or an initial inspection. During that inspection, uh, we're documenting what food, kitchen equipment they have. Um, but we're also taking that time to provide them with their binder, go over the binder with them, train them essentially on what they need to do to establish and maintain compliance. Um, and then each time we go out, if they don't have a binder, if they've lost their binder, we'll provide them with a new binder at that time.
Another question, on the blue part here, when they're complying. And it says they don't have to have a grease interceptor.
Mm-hmm. So we still make them maintain, uh, have practiced good kitchen best management practices. So they still have to do employee training and document that they're doing employee training. So that's what they're complying with. But, um, this, the bottom Ojuko Life is a juice-only place, so they're not really doing any food or grease production there, which is why they don't have anything. Black Market Bakery is a, is a bakery and most of their food is imported, so they're not really doing a lot of actually baking and cooking there. The only one really to look at closer and be a little bit more concerned with is, is this East Borough place. It's like a Vietnamese sandwich shop. And they do some cooking there, but it's mainly sandwiches. And so kind of in, in our, as we talk about the ongoing plan for the camp, is going to be looking closely at East Borough to see if maybe they need to retrofit and put in some sort of grease interceptor.
Have there been any spills there?
Uh, there have. Uh, it, um, a while ago, I, I believe, before a lot of these facilities came in, at the, if you, on the map, if, at the very bottom, right before it crosses over Bristol Street, there's a manhole right there, and they've had a spill at that manhole. And they had a, a really severe sag and damage in the line that crosses, uh, under Bristol Street that they had to repair. At, I think they repaired that at the same time that they replaced the main sewer line on Bristol Street when they put in that, that PVC line.
Did we repair that?
Yeah.
I don't believe they repaired their lateral.
Oh, they didn't? Okay.
We gave them the option for them to pay for it, because it was their private lateral. And they didn't respond to our inquiry. So we did replace the main line, but the lateral stayed as it was, and it does have a significant sag.
Yeah. Okay, so it still has the sag. I know they do clean their private line in that lateral frequently, at least once every six months. One of our ongoing action items is to confirm that and speak to the property manager about that. And so when the guys go out to clean, if they, if they're out there right after that they've hydrojetted, essentially, they're pushing all their grease and everything out of their line into the CMSD line. As I mentioned, when it hits the CMSD line, it does this into the line. And everything pushes upstream and just kind of hangs out there. And so, ongoingly, what we would like to do is coordinate with them to notify the district when they're going to do their hydrojet line cleaning, so that they can make sure that, to coordinate the cleaning of that main line around the same time.
How do you handle the non-compliant?
So when they've, when we've identified them as being non-compliant, we provide them, uh, basically a copy of this inspection form that you're seeing here, with a, with a number of days to be in compliance. You see them at the bottom there. We usually give them, seven days is pretty typical, especially for forms or if it's not a bad non-compliance. And then we conduct a follow-up inspection after those seven days to make sure that they've established compliance. If they are not in compliance, then, then we start, you know, escalating enforcement. We'll send letters. And eventually, they'll get to come for you guys to try to keep their business from getting shut down. But very rarely, obviously, it gets to that point.
I think this group of restaurants was the very reason that we implemented a fee to try to cover your costs of going back and forth.
Right.
And I don't believe any of the restaurants in the city have ever been fined. And we've used that, we've used that ordinance or policy on other, for, for other reasons. But this was the very reason that that policy was created. And, and I don't see it as having any impact at all. I mean, we're still getting restaurants that, you know, have three non-compliances in, in a year. And there's nothing been done to them, uh, from a fine standpoint. You know, it's just beyond me why we, why we went through this and created that policy. We, you know, we paid the attorney and staff, uh, to do this and, you know, it's, it, and nothing has been, nothing has occurred from it.
Joe, let me step in. So i- if I, if I may, we've always taken a kind of a business-friendly approach, but if I'm hearing from Director Oon, do you want us to start citing these people? We can do that easily. But we've always taken.
I want the policy to be reread and implemented. If, if it's, if, if it, if that policy has criteria in it, it, we've never used it. I don't mind being business-friendly, but did, I think this group of restaurants was the very reason, you know, that we, that we implemented that policy. And I, I can't tell you what the policy says right now, but.
So I, I, I do remember when that policy came out. And when it came out, we established a, a flow diagram. Um, and basically, the way the diagram works is you have your first inspection. If you identify non-compliance, you conduct a follow-up inspection.
Yeah.
If there's still non-compliance, we issue them the warning letter. And then if they're still non-compliant, then we issue them a fine. You know, based on these.
None of them have gotten to that point.
No. So usually, when we go back, they're in compliant, you know. But I think if we then go back in three months and they're not in compliance again, then you, you, instead of going through that whole approach, then you can start ratcheting that up much, much quicker.
Because you have five that are non-compliant since May.
Right. And so our ongoing plan for this location, uh, you know, typically, as I mentioned, we've been here quarterly, is, is to follow up with them in a month. Since they've all pumped out their interceptors, we know they're all clean. Uh, we want to establish the correct pumping frequency for V Italy. And more than likely, based on their fog production at this facility, they should be pumping their devices probably monthly is more of a correct pumping frequency. And then, and then also coordinate with the property manager. Uh, we've, we talked to them about that, you know, the last time we were there, but.
Have we implemented that? Or do we have any power to implement that?
We do, yes. So we can.
Why, why hasn't it been implemented?
It has for other facilities, but this, we haven't, we just started the process for V Italy. So we, we have done that for other FSCs. And typically, the, what we can do is put in those terms and conditions into their wastewater discharge permit under the special conditions that establish to them to have to maintain that twenty-five percent rule. under the special conditions that establish to them to have to maintain that 25% rule and the monthly pumping.
Maybe we put that on the study session. Let's look at that policy, maybe next study session. Just to, because I'd like to update myself on that.
I, I remember, I think, you know, I'm just finishing at my second term on the board. I remember that guy over on Seventeenth Street. Remember?
Greek restaurant?
It was a Greek that went out of business. I think that's as strong that we, as strong an effort as we ever made. And he actually, didn't, didn't he come to a board meeting?
Yeah, I did.
No, we had a special meeting.
We had a special, we had a public, that's right.
Alan was there and also it was like a court case, you know, he had to, he had to make his case and we had to make our case.
I think the frustration, I, I, I'm not going to speak for you, but the frustration is exactly what Joe says. We give them this letter, they rush out and get it done real quick and then they keep doing their same deal and waiting for another threat.
Well, my concern is when, when you do risk analysis, you want to look for the root cause. And for our staff to find this is, is not the root cause. It is something to do with, you know, those food service establishments and/or the enforcement, you know, which is EEC. Basically.
If we're going to be business friendly, then it's kind of back to what Jim was saying with the homeless deal is we almost need to have a marketing and an education campaign with all these restaurants. But who's going to do that? I mean, someone's got to pay to do that and we're not, I don't think we're going to ask you guys to do that, but-
They do that as part of their job already.
No, I understand that, but I mean, it's almost like we need to do it on a regular basis with restaurants, you know. We do it with plumbers with the CCTV thing. Maybe we do it with restaurants. I, I don't know, but I, I understand Bob's frustration because-
That could come from us in a, like a letter form once a year or so, just to update him.
I think increasing our presence within the center will, will make a difference as far as maintaining, you know, good compliance. And then also working with the center's property manager. You know, these facilities that are under conditional waiver here, we can, we can threaten to revoke conditional waivers in, in doing that and so-
It may even boil down to getting the owner of the camp and the lab, I can't think of his name.
Yeah.
You know who I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's, it's a, well, I, I know the, the property manager, I don't know if she's still there, was Jennifer White. But it's, it's, the Camp Properties LLC is the-
And so by the husband and wife.
Mm-hmm. They own both, I think both the camp and the lab, yeah.
Yeah, Sheen or whatever. I mean, if it gets down to doing some of that.
Well, they're, you know, they're, they're, they tout that they're environmentally, whatever. And, you know, if they have a major sewer spill, you know, it could close the beaches.
But, and I think just the last point we wanted to make here is, is even if you, from our experience with the way grease interceptors work and fog in general, you can have a, they're not 100% effective a grease interceptor. You know, they're, they're lab tested or more around like 80 to 90% and that's under ideal conditions. Really, the reality is that they're much less efficient. And so when you have a high density number of facilities, even if they all have grease interceptors, if they're maintained perfectly, you're still going to have fog pass through from them into the sewer line. And, and especially in this location where you're at the top of the line with very low flow, you know, this, this could just be, you know, we'll do, you know, stay on them, but it could be an ongoing issue. But it should never get to a point where there's so much fog discharge that you have a spill or, or anything like that.
Yes, good question. We, during your presentation, you talked about where the private lateral intercepts on Bristol Street.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of grease, and I can see that happening, grease coming in and just going both ways. Is there anything that we can do or anything we could put at that T?
Right.
Help reduce the problem into our system.
So one thing you could do here, because I believe that line, correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, is an eight inch line coming into an eight inch line. You could put a, a manhole at this location and then have that line sweep more into the main line so that when they do push in, they'll be pushing it down in the downstream line. It won't have the opportunity to go up.
So there is no manhole cover there?
No.
But it makes, I, I, Rob?
Uh, that's correct. There's no manhole cover there. Joe brought up a good point that they are at the upstream end of the system. So there is very little water to be in the pipe. The other thing is that even though we reconstructed the first piece of pipe they tie into, the piece below that on Bristol and then it takes a right turn and goes up Randolph, that's a very flat piece of sewer and there are numerous sags in there. And we are not helping the situation by having to have that kind of downstream line. We have studied, removed and reconstructed sags to remove hot spots and it's very expensive. It's cheaper to maintain a sag than it is to actually remove the sewer and replace it. So that's kind of helping us. So it's really a confluence of all these factors together.
I, I'm just thinking back to my original thought. If, if we were to do something at that, that point, if we went to the owner of the property and said, you know, you guys have caused or could cause a potential problem, we're going to have to do this and you're going to share the cost with us.
Well, a, a Y, if it's a true Y, it doesn't come in as a T, it comes in at an angle.
Yeah, I would think so.
So there is some angle there.
Okay.
And having a manhole there instead, if, if it's a, if it's a T, that's fine. But if it's a Y, the difference between that Y and then or having a manhole there, not going to be much.
Appreciate that. You have a question for Joe?
Do you have recommendations? Could we get a list of recommendations for, you know, what EEC intends to do about this?
Certainly, yeah. Yeah, we have a, I can put together the, the action plan.
Yeah.
And then that can be provided.
Okay.
Yeah.
You always learn a lot when you come in to speak to us.
Oh, that's great. I'm good.
Thank you for all of this.
Oh, you're welcome.
You just need to have people quit eating as much.
Just a quick question as you're finishing.
Yeah.
How's Newport Rib doing now? Because remember they used to have a problem.
Right.
And I think they're doing better.
They're doing much better, yeah. They've, they've gotten that interceptor on the right pumping frequency, which is very frequent.
So they've been over there a lot. I've seen the pumpers there.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're getting it pumped, I think every other week or so there, or if not monthly now possibly. But it's an undersized interceptor there and all their drippings from, go right into it. So it's-
Have you observed the, the pumper being there?
Mm-hmm.
Because I've observed in, in at least one other location where a pumper was just scooping the grease over the baffle.
Yeah.
So they actually do do pumping because this other outfit is around in Costa Mesa and other places. It, they're cheap at twice the price and they, they defeat the purpose by just going in and scooping the grease over the baffle.
Yeah, that, that has been an issue, you know, just having, you know, the pumpers that are there in the middle of the night. Very rarely are people really watching them. We've, we've overseen a lot of pump outs, but obviously they're going to do a great job when you're standing there watching them. But that's an issue. We, we've come up, the interceptors recently pump where they do like half, half or partial pumping.
There wasn't even a truck there. There was just a scoop shovel.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then Scott will go to item five.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rob Hammers, District Engineer will be giving his report.
Mr. President and Board Members, this is something that we have done historically and is make sole source findings on the pump manufacturer so that we stay with the same pump in all the pump stations. We'd like to have every single thing in a pump station be exactly alike in all the stations. But that would be stretching the law too far. But we, we do consult with our attorney and this is a longstanding policy in order to have flight pumps in our pump stations. They are the Cadillac of pumps and they can do many things that other pumps can't do. And that's the reason why we started with them and it's been sole source since before my time. So you have a staff report that is, has been through the attorney and has more writing of his than writing of mine. So I, although Alan is not here, I think you should be comfortable with what he has added to the staff report. There are laws with regard to making sole source findings and we are in compliance with the law. We're also made findings that are in this report that state how important it is to have this particular pump when you have emergency conditions and it's raining and the electricity's off and it's in the middle of the night. You, you want your, your pump crew to know exactly what they're doing and how to reinstate pumping and continuation of the pump station because of the pump rates are high and the spills can be large very quickly. So the recommendation, and, and of course, this is a study session. So we would be, should the board feel comfortable with this, we would bring this back to the meeting at the end of, the regular meeting at the end of the month for formal action. So there is attached a quote from Flight for the pumps for this station. And the total of the request is $52,000, which includes a spare pump, the two pumps, a spare pump and the remaining minimum flight accessories to install those pumps, meaning the discharge bases, the guide rails, the guide bar brackets, startup, et cetera, et cetera. So this is how we've been operating all these years and it's worked out very well for us. We have a point now where we, we've made some major strides. And the best thing we've done is we now, although we do strive for interchangeability between pump stations, which we have that capability, but we have also gotten to the point where we have a spare for every station, which is fantastic, meaning that we have a pump on the shelf for each station. So we can put a spare pump in any station at any time and will not skip a heartbeat. What happens with new pumps is that as time goes on, the pump manufacturer creates more efficiencies in pumps. And what used to be pumped with 20 horsepower is now 15 horsepower. So this station is actually going from two 20 horsepower pumps to two 15 horsepower pumps because of the efficiencies. And that really hurts interchangeability because we have the same model out there in other stations, but it's 20 horsepower. And you have other things in the pump stations like starters and other parts of the electrical system that if it's sized for 20 horsepower, it's not interchangeable with 15 horsepower. So that's why we have a spare pump included in this quote. And had we bought the pumps outside of a construction contract, this is the cost we would have paid. Had the contractor called them up and, and if we had made it part of the bid package and they didn't try to substitute something else, that's the same cost the contractor would pay. So there's no real loss by going in this direction. The only thing it helps us do is fend off the contractor from trying to give us a, instead of $52,000 worth of equipment, he's going to try to get us to buy $25,000 worth of equipment and a less expensive pump that is of questionable value. And we've been through that before too. We tried switching pumps one time and we ended up tossing them all out and reconstructing to go back to Flight. So that's a quick overview of everything. I'd be happy to answer questions based on any of the staff report or maybe, I, I don't think it's necessary to go through each step by step unless you would like me to. It's, it's a rather lengthy staff report.
I, I have a, I have a suggestion. Orange County Sand District has literally dozens, if not hundreds, of pieces of equipment and pieces of instrumentation and whatnot that they've standardized on. You know, I think we ought to look into a policy where, where, where this becomes a policy rather than, you know, a, a pump station by pump station request to standardize. Obviously, well, I'm going to be supportive of, of this, of the criteria that you, you, we do use, you do use to standardize. But I think we ought to look into, you know, what, however many, and there won't be too many pieces of equipment, you know, that we should standardize on and just make it a policy rather than a pump station by pump station request to standardize. Because staff's going to come to us every time that we rehab a station, you know, to buy this, buy this same equipment, but-
One, one thing we do standardize on also is the ability of our field crews. We do, these are not electrical engineers in college.
Right.
So we have to have, we're not putting in the state of the art, latest and greatest type of control systems that are available because it's just too complicated. And it gets beyond the capability of our field crew. Our pump station crew is very smart, but the other members of the cleaning crews also have to, they're also on standby and they're also responsible for showing up and understanding something about what's going on if it's a pump station problem. So they have been trained on Flight pumps and we take advantage of that, that ability. But their location being close by and their service level and everything else just falls right into place. So we have a good situation.
Study session.
Oh, well, I'll wait, I'll wait, I'll wait a week.
One, one question. The fact that it's a sole source finding, can we do a resolution?
Resolution?
A resolution. I think we need to check with Alan to make sure we can do a sole source resolute, put that in.
That would be a separate effort. That could be mentioned at the board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is all set for this item here now. But to adopt that policy would take some research and-
That's, I mean, going along with what Bob said.
Orange County Sand District does it on a regular basis. I mean, they have a list and, but they do report what they do buy. And they also have a standard list of, you know, small contractors and, but this equipment can be standardized and can be put in policy, at least according to Orange County Sand Districts.
How about budget wise, are we, out of this year's budget or?
Uh, we budgeted $2 million for the pump station and we think budget wise, we're in very good shape. So we're, we're not worried about the budget.
I like, I like the plan.
I would expect it to come from our, yeah.
Well, I think we're a half million dollars under budget in the two projects.
But I'm just curious.
I think with our whole change from, from, you know, the abandonment process and this is very timely, I think, that we start looking at this stuff.
Right, that, this pump station is the last of the Mohicans and it's ready for reconstruction. It's not a remodel, it's a reconstruction. So-
Okay, very good. All right, so then we'll see this at the end of the month.
Yes, if, thank you.
Can't, I can't wait.
I'm sure you can. Item six, Scott.
Again, this will be handled by Rob Hammers, District Engineer.
You?
Thank you. We actually have our next two facilities after President Force Main and President Pump Station. The next two, the next two items that our field crew thought was most critical that needs to be, needs to be taken care of after we canceled the abandonment is the Canyon Force Main and the Canyon Pump Station. And that's what these two projects are. We had them as separate projects because it's a, they're both specialty work, pump stations and pipeline. And they're different specialties and there's few and far between contractors that can handle both of them. handle both of them. However, in this project, we are, we are in the intersection of Canyon and Wilson, and we are in the middle of Wilson Street from Canyon Drive to National Avenue. So, we are going to be constructing right down the middle of the street. And if we have two separate projects, we're going to have to have traffic control, noise abatement. It's going to be very rough on the residents because it's residential, and they don't want us to work at night in residential because people can't sleep, so that means during the day, there's a school around the corner. The last thing we want to do is to do a project in that intersection and then come back a few months later and then re-dig up everything and put the pipeline down the street or in the other order. So, we would look very bad. It would look like we made a mistake. So, the request is to combine the projects, and there'll be some economies of scale there, and I don't think we'll suffer as far as the work goes. Our best contractor actually can do pump stations and pipeline, which is very fortunate. So, the request is just to combine the budgets. The report states that the engineering fee will rise. Well, there needed to be an engineering fee for the pump station anyway, and whether that gets added to the Force Main project or whether it gets done on its own, that cost would have been there, so that's not really an extra cost. But there is a list there of what's being done inside the pump station under Analysis Section 1 through 7, and that came from roundtable discussion from our Pump Station Committee that Scott chairs. We meet quarterly, and we focus heavily on the pump stations because they are part of the Force Maines, and it's a very dynamic situation with lots of water going all day long. So, like it for each, added together would be eight-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, but those monies have already been budgeted. So, this is more of a trying to minimize the impact to the community and lessen the time we're out there and lessen the heartache to everybody. And we can do that by having the pipeline go in at the same time the pump station work is being done. And to minimize even further, we're going to install the Force Main using horizontal directional drilling like we have been lately and minimize the impact there. That'll reduce the trenching in the street. There'll only be an excavation at the pump station, one in the middle, and one at the end, instead of digging up the whole length of the pipeline. So, that will be, that's actually a very good thing. And when we've been in there before, it's tough on traffic, so...
What street are you talking about?
Wilson Street.
Okay, Wilson, okay.
Yeah, Wilson...
Down the middle of Wilson?
Right down the middle.
Down near Canyon.
I know, I know where it's at, but I, but they have, do they have a dividing planter in that street or not?
It's just striped.
Okay, just striped.
It's a middle merging lane. Some people call it a suicide lane.
Yeah, because you talked about National, so it's going down Wilson Street.
Right. We're going down Wilson Street from Canyon to National, which is, the pump station's at the bottom of the hill. So, we go up the hill, then over to National, and then that's it. Then the wastewater flows by gravity from there all the way to Harbor.
Do you have a timeline that it'll start and...
We are almost ready to put the pump station, the President Pump Station, out to bid.
Okay.
We were going to let that settle, get out to bid, and then put this out to bid not too far behind it. Not sure whether it's better to do it in the summer where there's no school or do it during school. I'm not sure which one is better, but I doubt the city will have us working at night because it's a residential area.
I like your, the fact that the economy's of sale, scale, and getting it done together probably will save us a little bit of money, and I had thought about it till you said it just a minute ago, but it does look bad if you start a project, finish it, and then redo it, do whatever is second. So, I think combining these makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that.
I...
What's the length of time of the project on Wilson?
It would probably be a month from start to finish, but that doesn't mean we're going to have the road closed all that time. There's a lot of things that get done early, such as potholing. Potholing you can do at night, and that's just checking the elevation of the utilities.
No matter what time of the year, it's going to be the same because of the traffic going to the freeway, you know?
It's really bad there.
Right.
So, it doesn't really matter, I don't think, just...
Do you give notices to people?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's part of our process.
Like Norm's Restaurant and all those?
We've expanded that under Scott's direction to make sure that we provide the city with flyers and information that they can put on their website, and we put an arrow board out there two weeks in advance or longer. And between the city and us, we do a good job of getting the word out.
Last time it was smooth.
Right, last time, when we were in the intersection of both Victoria and Harbor and Wilson and Harbor, every, we only had one complaint between the two jobs, and that was somebody down the street who, because the city told us to work at night, he didn't like that. So, that was the only complaint, though.
The material, will you use the HDT, whatever?
HDPE for the Force Main.
So, that'll be something that won't corrode?
Right.
Um, yeah, and there's already a lot of sewers in that street.
Yes. So, we have a, we have a nice little corridor there that we found, and it'll work well.
Okay.
So, that, under your direction, we'll bring that back to the formal board meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you for the thorough presentation.
Thank you. That ends the engineer's report.
Okay, item eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve Hodges, Finance Manager, will be giving his report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. To give you a little background of our fees and how they're established, is historically we've done a study, and we've looked at the average amount of staff time that goes into providing each service. We've met with Rob and his team, including Joe Lamone, his inspection time, and we've come up with an average fee to try to recoup our costs. The goal isn't to make a profit, nor is it to undercollect, because then that would mean the assessments are subsidizing the over-the-counter permits. The last time that we did a fee study was in 2010, and since that time, most of the positions used to evaluate these fees have either gone away or have been reclassified or repurposed. So, basically, what that has done is it's created an equity in the fees based on the services we're providing behind them. So, we've gone through and done a fee study, again, with Rob and his team and the front counter, and established what the current time is. Rates have gone up, you know, as far as salaries and benefits, and even our outsized fees for Rob and EEC. However, there's been a variety of efficiencies that we've established that's actually caused six of the twelve fees to go down. A great example is Scott's been working diligently on performance measures, and one of the performance measures is the amount of time it takes us to turn around a permit, and from 2017 to 18, we cut that time in half. So, despite, you know, the increases in perders and salaries, we have been able to offset that a great deal. So, in our fee, what it's showing is we're having six fees go up and six fees go down, and the goal isn't to raise revenue or reduce revenue, it's just to establish equity so that someone that's coming in and just putting in a sink isn't paying the same price as someone who's doing a full remodel. So, the suggestion would be that we update these fees and go forward as of July 1st and bring it to you at the end of the month.
What's the net effect of changing this around? I mean, do we bring in more income, or...
So, the goal wouldn't be to raise or reduce revenue, and the goal would actually be to evaluate these during each budget cycle because our costs do change, you know, as you guys know, through the two-year cycles, and that way we wouldn't be behind and have hourly calculations behind positions that aren't part of the process anymore.
Are we going to raise revenue, or is it going to be the, is the rubs going up or down, or stay neutral?
The goal is to stay the same.
Stay neutral.
Neutral, we're not going to lose money, we're not going to make any money.
Talk about the grease interceptor one, why, why we haven't had that before, or...
So, when we looked at the past fee studies, Joe Jenkins' time wasn't factored into any of the fees. So, when we had an establishment putting in a grease interceptor versus one that wasn't, there was no difference in costs.
I mean, that's a big, that probably makes up as much of the six that are going down as any of any of it, I would think. Yeah. Rob?
Yes, thank you. Another flexible item that we have, which is really excellent, is the ability to take a deposit. When these fees were first developed, large new development was twelve to fifteen, maybe twenty, units residential in a tract. Today's large development is a hundred-and-fifty units, and twenty-five, fifty, sixty developers were buying blocks of the city and putting in huge subdivisions. And so, from before that, we, we didn't like a deposit because of all the bookkeeping and time it took, but we have started using deposits for the larger developments, and that really helps a lot because it does take a lot of time to work through the developments. So, that may not be up there, but it is part of policy, and that's a great flexibility that we have. And it should be the finance director or the finance manager and the general manager should have the ability to make a decision with regard to fees if there's, if that needs to be adjusted at a certain amount of time. So, I think Steve's done very well, and as a district, we adapted to the changing development and those commitments.
I see on there it's sewer lateral assistance, the current fee is two-fifty, and the proposed amount would be seventy bucks. Is, I don't remember those numbers being like that. I mean, what specific sewer lateral program is it that...
So, Rob's going to be able to better answer this than me. Current staff has not yet had to deal with sewer lateral assistance. We did have that program the year before, and so my understanding is this is an old fee that's kind of obsolete and comes up once every blue moon, but Rob would better be able to explain that.
The sewer lateral assistance program is the amount of money that is paid to the contractor for CCTV and sewer lateral. And as a matter of fact, our engineering cap was the one who recommended that change, and I think he would be the best to respond to.
Well, when we were doing the sewer lateral assistance, we, we would, that two-fifty went towards CCTV-ing it before they did the work, right?
Right.
And we charged that two-fifty to do that.
I think that had to include Joe Lamone's cost, right, the sewer lateral assistance program, because we would have to go out there and inspect it, so that would cost, that would incur his cost. Now that we're not inspecting sewer lateral, we don't need that cost anymore, so that's more of administrative cost now than seventy dollars, because now all we're doing is reviewing videos.
And our current engineering cap does it. So, he makes the schedule of who is in the program, and he looks at the video while not involved at all. So, that's exactly what it is, what Scott said. They took everything else out, and that's the cost of, Bao reports to Steve, that's Bao's cost to review one, one site, review one video, take care of all phone calls, do all that, seventy dollars. So, that's all it is now.
Didn't we, in the previous, if I, the previous one, we had, didn't we CCTV it twice, before and after, or did we just do it before?
In the previous one, we did it twice because the before showed us we need to verify what needed to be done, and then the after was to verify what was done.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But I do know that we have number nine on the agenda today, which is to discuss the CCTV program. But let's just say that the reason that, that cost went down is that our inspector and our engineer are not involved in the assistance program.
So, this will come to us in June for adoption or rejection?
Want to talk about the BIA?
Yes, we have sent a letter to BIA, and we have, I've emailed them as well. It's the Building Industry Association of Orange County.
Business Industries, Business Industry Association, right?
I thought it was Building.
Building, okay.
So, they've been notified, and we haven't heard anything back yet, but they, they do have a couple more weeks to let us know if they have any concerns, which we will have before.
I'm thinking of the BIA for the city, aren't I? Yeah, sorry. Okay. So, if we don't hear back from them, we're just going to go forward?
And I'll give you that report on the 28th, what feedback we did or did not get.
Good. Any other questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. Rob, thank you. Item nine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, Steve Hodges, Finance Manager, will be giving his report.
Thanks again. During the budget, the third quarter quarterly, we went over and we saw significant savings when, I'll call, for the CCTV program. And essentially, what that means is the program isn't getting utilized as much as we originally anticipated. So, we went back and we dove into the numbers, and we saw that when we put it in the quarterly newsletter, the applications did increase significantly, but not nearly enough to eat up the fifty thousand dollars that we had set aside for it. So, there's a couple of different avenues we can go. Originally, we solicited eighty-two different plumbers to come in and learn about the program. Nineteen went through training and are listed as recommended vendors, and we could hold that again as a yearly class and hopefully get more than the nineteen to kind of refresh them on that. Another recommendation that staff has is coming up with some sort of a catchy drawing because most people don't necessarily know what a lateral is or even CCTV, to get people's attention towards that in the newsletter. And then another road we could go down is we will have approximately twenty-five thousand dollars left over from this year's program and another fifty thousand for next year's. We could look at repurposing that for a different program or somehow enhancing this one.
You know, I think my gut feeling is the plumbers liked the previous slap program because they were getting more money out of the deal. This, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's important that we get these guys back in here, and they're still going to have the opportunity to do some, some work, but it's sort of this inherent greediness that's built in between the two programs.
I think this program is protecting your constituents a lot better than the other one. I think that's the reason why they're, maybe, you know, they're not, I can't say they're all doing it, but we saw some taking advantage of residents. They were doing work on it when it was necessary.
So, I have customers that, that it was done, and, and I think we need to, at least my thought would be to really get out there and push it again. I mean, not just with the plumbers, we need to push it with the public.
Yeah, I think that agree, I mean, not with the plumbers, I think we need to push with the public, agreed.
We can use our newsletter, too, for that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I do have a comment, and Steve?
Steve?
The previous chart showed that the two-hundred-and-fifty dollar is going down to seventy dollars. Well, if we're going to pay the plumbers instead of two-fifty for the video, if we're going to pay them seventy dollars, they're not going to even want to do anything. So, we need to verify that that's what the intent there was.
And my understanding is there's no... And my understanding is there's no relationship between the two charges. The CCTV is essentially just to cover Bow's or Rob's cost in reviewing the video, and we reimburse the plumber. And from what I understand, and it's because, you know, most people aren't educated as far as the lateral and the maintenance of it, is when plumbers go and do the work and it's an emergency, they're charging three fifty and up, and we're only going to pay them two hundred or two fifty. And so unless someone's being proactive, the program's not going to get utilized, which goes into the education.
Yeah, I, I think our, all of our intents were to be proactive, to have residents have the ability to, to look at this thing, you know? Residents are waiting until something happens before they do this, and then it's too late anyway, so...
I, I believe it slows the plumber down, and they're not happy about it.
I agree.
They go out there, make a service call, what do they end up with? A CCTV, and that's it. And then that's got to run through the system until they get a call back, and now they've got to redo everything. So, it's, it's not that great for them.
I, I, yeah, I think, I'd like to spend some time with this. I think we all want to be proactive and see what solutions we can come up with on this.
Maybe we can take some of these, there's about two or three things we pass it off into once, another study session.
I, I would, you know, I would like to even invite a couple of plumbers in here and have them tell it, give us their opinion. You know, they're the ones doing it. Maybe we could get, what's his name? I see his truck, now that I know his, just in time, now that I know his name, I see his trucks all over the place now, you know? So, I think it'd help, he was one that, I remember that we had the, the industry guy in here yelling at us because we were given preferential treatment. All right, tell us what you would like to, let's talk to them.
We did get a hundred and fifty-one applications, and that's not counting June of this year.
Yeah.
So, that's not, that's pretty good, right?
I think, yeah, I think it's pretty good, too. I agree.
Well, Art and I have talked in the past about maybe we could get some focus on areas of the city where we think the sewer laterals would be compromised, you know, and then so, and we've talked in the past, and staff talked in the past, like Royal Palms, got too many trees, and, you know, and, and we, we really had about ten years' worth of data that told us where people were taking advantage of the SLAP program. So, I, I, I think we can be more, you know, we can do newsletters, 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 and we can put it out in the libraries and senior center and whatnot. But if we really want the program to be successful, maybe, maybe we can get some focus on where in the city it would be useful to have this program. You know, being proactive means getting ahead of the problem, and, and we know where the problems, I think we have some idea where the problems are, likely to happen.
Drive through the west side, and, I mean, trees, those trees are seventy years old.
We had that one street on College Park with all those trees, remember, but that's one street, and then we had...
And Royal Palm, yeah.
Rob identified Forest Country.
Yeah, Fullerton Avenue has trees that can't be over the street.
Fullerton's, that's a good, yeah.
And our main line and those laterals in that area is packed with roots.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Bob.
The problem is that people are not fighting on the ability to be proactive. They wait until there's a problem. That's what happens.
Yeah, and being proactive means to get ahead of the problem. The agency wants us, wants them to get ahead of the program, get ahead of the problem. You know, we dedicated funds to it, and now we're trying to figure out how to expend them.
Exactly. Kind of like waiting for a toothache to go to the dentist.
Yeah, Jim's idea is good, though, maybe have a study session just on this item.
I think it's worthwhile doing that.
Look at past practices and new practices.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I have a thorough understanding of what this is going to net out, you know?
Sounds good. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, closing out, any, any other comments from the file?
Well, in line with what I was just talking about, we did a CCTVing program of the entire city. And, and, you know, the proactive part of that was to repair the grade five problems, potential problems. In that CCTVing, you know, when I looked at, when we've been shown some of that CCTVing work in the past, you know, there are sewer laterals that come in that are packed with roots. There either packed with roots because they, you know, they didn't make the correct connection to the sewer, or they're pecked with roots because, you know, the trees along the lateral get in there. Is there anything we can use in that regard, you know, to alert the homeowners, and maybe this has already been answered, but to alert the homeowners that their sewer ladder is packed with roots?
We do do that.
Do you?
And Scott, Scott, I've been writing letters probably once every hotspot committee that we have been notifying somebody.
Does...
So, when we have a hotspot, we're discussing it, and they see roots there. Scott asked that a letter be sent.
Well, we have two hundred and twelve miles of sewer lateral that, you know, we did inspect. And, you know, we've taken, you know, we've, we've done the emergency repairs where it was needed. It can, can that be helpful in any, to the residents in any, in any additional forms? Do we, do, does only the inspect, the only guy sitting in the truck look at that, and, and they record, you know, ten different things that they're required to record, but...
We normally end up looking at the videos that are in the hotspots, for sure, and then when there's roots coming out of laterals there. And the crew also knows, when they run the hose down and they run into something, then we go back and look. And it is true that the roots can stick out far enough out of a lateral to cause those problems with the main line.
Yeah. And then pushed-in roots used to be what was causing a lot of our SSOs.
Yes, I wanted to remind you of some things. First of all, our liaison meeting this, this Friday, the fifteenth, if we're coming, do we have it...
It's posted for...
Posted?
It's posted for, I think, Jim and Mike, but we can all attend, right?
Okay, so we can all attend and talk, okay. Next thing is CSDA, September twenty-fourth to twenty-seventh. It's an annual conference. I'm going to hand you out these little things on that.
We have notice of that, yeah, hold on, hold on.
We should be, we should be booking it real soon. We can always get out of it, but you can't get those spots. So, you know, it's at the Reasance, the Reasance?
Renaissance.
Renaissance building, hotel.
Nice hotel.
In Indian Wells. And we've been there before, but we need to know how many are coming.
I'll be going.
I'm, ST Armey's already taken care of me.
Okay. Jim, are you going?
I haven't checked the football schedule yet.
Well, it's right after the fish fry. It's the Monday, yeah.
Sunday's the fish fry, Monday's first.
But I don't play golf, so I don't have to go that Monday.
Some of us do.
I'll have to let you know.
So, it sounds like there's four of us.
Bob, are you going to be going?
I think so.
Okay, yeah. Four for sure.
And...
Or three of us. Mike's going to be separate.
Yeah, well, he would be, so there's one, two, three, four.
Well, Jim's going to let us know.
Yeah, but we can book him now, just to be sure.
Yeah, okay.
You could always get out of it, but you can't get into it.
Well, because you'll be there at the fish fry, and then if it goes Monday through Wednesday or Thursday...
I think I'm okay.
I think he's okay.
But I gotta check.
I hope you are. I need a ride.
You always have your motor, so...
Oh, yeah. Could you do that in the line?
And then the next one's Chamber Luncheon, which is the twenty-first, Thursday, and that's at the Fairgrounds. It's supposed to be pretty good. That last one they had was fantastic, but it is one where they have a speaker. And so, then also there's Is Doc, which is Thursday, the twenty-eighth. And this is all in June, that's why I'm, you know, making sure.
LaFco is tomorrow morning.
Are you going to it?
Probably.
Okay. No, LaFco's tomorrow morning, okay. So, anyway, the Is Doc one, of course, is the twenty-third, and that's going to be the speaker, Epstein.
Twenty-third of June.
He's really good, you know, involved on Washington and what's going on and...
Right.
Are you?
Saperstein.
Oh, Saperstein.
Yeah.
Is he the speaker at the June twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Yeah, he was.
But Chris Epstein was the speaker.
Chris, I said that.
He said Saperstein.
Well, he made that up.
Chris Epstein is, yeah, he's the speaker.
Yeah, it's Chris.
I will, I will be able to make it. Mr. Epstein and I have difficulties when we're together. He doesn't like my kid.
Who?
Never mind.
What, what day is that?
Twenty-eighth.
It's the twenty-eighth, it's Thursday.
Is Doc?
Is Doc, yeah. Okay. That's all I wanted to say.
I had a, just a quick question, I guess. We haven't heard for a while, but how are your Fridays closed working out? Are we getting any feedback? Everybody okay with that?
I think I mentioned, but we did get one complaint from a resident that came, showed up on a Friday when we were closed. He wanted, he wanted to pay his, I don't know, it was a permit fee or trash, I don't know, but he had to pay something, and so he was really upset with that. So, I responded back to him and apologized and encouraged him to, you know, get on our, on our email listings so he can be up to date on what's going on. I also told him about, you know, one of the reasons why we closed rather Friday, because now residents have an option to pay online. You don't have to come here to pay, so you can pay online. And so, so one that we changed after receiving that complaint is that we have a little notice on front door, so if someone does show up here on that Friday we're closed and they need to pay, make payment, they'll know, hey, you can go back home and make that payment. So, that, that, since we closed, that was the only complaint we received. Everything else has been fine.
And I think it's been three weeks since I haven't been informed that Monrovia was a problem, so whatever, hopefully that's taken care of.
That's good.
Also, the, could we get, in a future study session, could we get data on the, the use of the drop-off med thing?
Oh, I think that's, okay. There's no other business, we are adjourned.